Perfect. So, we are going to open the Regional School Committee meeting. I would first like, so call to order, I would first like to talk a little bit about community comments. We do have a policy in Dover Sherburne where we are happy and excited to invite our community to offer their comments. We like to hear what the community is thinking, but we also have to balance that with our work of getting the committee's work done. So, what we do here is we limit our comments to three minutes. And we just ask that you identify yourself, and then you limit your comments to three minutes. So, are there any community comments today? Okay. Seeing none, thank you. We are going to move on to reports, and we invite Assistant Superintendent Beth McCoy to share her presentation.
So, I have my ring report, which is in your packet, and it generally just goes over our work since we left off in the spring, which is taking our strategic plan and moving into the summer with our leadership team and retreat, which Dr. Keo will talk about, and then moving into our summer professional development work with the staff to make sure that they are prepared with the tools they need to help us carry the strategic plan forward. So, I mentioned that on August 21st, we had pre-K through 12 curriculum leaders come together, all in this space, which is really exciting, because we had people from all different schools and disciplines talking to each other about curriculum and looking for bias in the curriculum and making sure that we're preparing our graduates for preparation in a diverse and global society. So, from there, we then came together for the opening of school, and after everyone had a chance to mingle and say hello and catch up, we had an activity where the faculty were broken up into groups of five. There was 50 groups total, and each group was given an envelope with a random assortment of letters and asked to make as many words as they could in 15 minutes. And so, over time, they realized that some groups were still focused on making 110, 120, 130 words, that they didn't realize that other groups who had letters like X, W, Y, Q, but no U, were stuck with two or three words and completely disengaged from the activity. So, at the end of that, we talked about what does that say in regard to our work around cultural proficiency, and the idea of privilege and power and the resources you're given, and then what does it mean for our work as educators? And then, from that point, we went into the auditorium. Dr. Keo gave his welcome, and then Dr. Keo gave me an opportunity to talk to the faculty about our work around teaching and learning this year, which entered my presentee presentation. So, it was requested that I share it with you tonight, and I asked, there's two options, I can just walk you through it briefly, or I can give you the same speech that I gave at the opening of the faculty.
Your preference.
One would be longer than the other, but it gives you the whole snapshot. Brief?
To get.
Okay, sure. Okay, so it's up here. At the place. All right. So, I opened by asking, or by stating that my essential question, as educators, we're always talking about essential questions, and what is the big question we want our students to be able to answer at the end of a unit or the end of a year? And so, I said, "My essential question for the district was, what are you going to do with your thousand?" And of course, the question is, "What do you mean a thousand, a thousand what?" And so, we said, "Let's start with the end in mind." So, as you know, the district teachers did a lot of work in years past around understanding by design and thinking about what's the goal that we want our students to be able to achieve, and then plan backwards, how are we going to assess whether or not they achieved it, and therefore, what should our instruction look like in the classroom? So, if our goal under the strategic plan, one of them is to prepare graduates for success in a rapidly changing world, what does that mean for what we do with our thousand? So, as you know, the Academic Innovation Committee will be coming together this year to define the competencies of our graduates. One, I assume, will be around cultural responsiveness, or global thinking, or social justice. So, how do we prepare our kids for this world if that's going to be one of the goals as they graduate? So, I referenced one of my favorite books from my days as a teacher, which is If the World Were a Village. And so, what it does is it takes the entire world's population of 7.6 billion people and shrinks it down to say, "If we had one village that was representative of the entire world, that village only being 100 people, what would those people look like?" So, we walked through that. So, of this village of 100 people, five of them would be from the United States or Canada. Nine of them would be native English speakers. Thirty-three of them would be Christian. Twenty-four of them would have enough to eat all the time, and 11 of them would have no food or not enough, and the rest are in the middle. Ninety-one have access to safe water, which, since this book was published, that's actually an increase, which is good news. Sanitation, 65% of the villagers would have adequate access to sanitation. Ninety-two have access to clean air. Eighty-four have access to electricity. Eighty-six of the 100 are literate, but obviously to varying degrees. Seven of them have college degrees. And one of the villagers controls 50% of the village's money. So, what does that mean for the students we have in front of us? You think about the students of Dover and Sherburne. Many of them come from families that speak English, are from the United States, have access to food and water, college degrees, and represent the top 10, or 5, or 2% of financial income earners. So, what does that mean if we're going to take that population and prepare them for a world that does not always have food and worship the same way, et cetera? So, what are we going to do with our thousand? So, what is the thousand? If you multiply 181 days times six and a half hours a day, our teachers have 1,176.5 hours, roughly 1,000 hours of a captive audience that they can use to address issues of social justice and prepare these kids for the world. So, how are we going to use that? Last year, on our November PD Day, we had looked at the cultural iceberg, which I know we talked about through the We Are DS presentation, and looking at all the different isms and identity pieces, whether it's race, religion, mental health, social economic status, social education, ability, disability, all of those things. And even though we didn't each have an opportunity to attend all the sessions on that November day, the benefit was that we at least realized that our students are diverse despite what they might look like on the outside, and that they each have different needs. And so, that being said, we walked away from November realizing that we teach more than English and science. We teach students, and we need to begin to think about how we teach them and what we teach them. This summer, we launched into the summer with a common book all the faculty pre-K through 12 read, So You Want to Talk About Race, which we realized is just one of the isms, but it was at least an opener and an opportunity to have common language around terms like stereotype, prejudice, intersectionality, privilege, microaggression, so we can apply that to any of the isms as we move forward. So, now, the question is, we have a captive audience of students for 1,000 hours, what's the next step? And it's to start thinking about the materials that we put in front of our captive audience, the questions we ask, the concepts we study, the voices we listen to. So, The Danger of a Single Story is a TED Talk, which, if you haven't seen it, I highly recommend it. It's quite powerful. Shemanda talks about being a student, a Nigerian student, who, from the moment she started to read and write, started writing stories about people who were white with blue eyes, who walked in the snow and drank ginger beer. But funny, when growing up in Nigeria, there was none of that. So, clearly, the books and the questions and the material she'd been exposed to her entire early life were from British and American authors, and she didn't see herself in that. So, there's the danger of a single story. She thought there was only one story to be had, and she thought it wasn't hers. So, then, how do we make sure that we're exposing our kids to multiple stories, whether they're stories they can learn about from their DS peers or otherwise, and even within the Dover Sherburne-Boston communities, students who don't necessarily look like themselves with different abilities, different needs? So, we recognize that we've come a long way in our work already, and I know this both as an educator in DS and as a parent. I know that we celebrate Chinese New Year. We have sprinkled in Rosa Parks, and Sacagawea, and the Holocaust into our very white European curriculum, but I'm challenging the faculty to go farther than that, and to think about really how to integrate voices and themes into the core concepts and topics that we cover. So, an example was when looking at industry, instead of just looking at black Native Americans in the Triangle Trade, and white European males in Willing, and Native Americans in plantations, but that we look at all voices through all different core topics as we study them. Another example is when studying World War II at the high school level, that we give students an opportunity to learn about women as production soldiers and those keeping the materials coming from home, Mexican-American soldiers, the Navajo code talkers who volunteered their life to maintain the code and not give it away for the sake of the military, the African-Americans at Tuskegee and who they were and what they represented, and really what it meant to be part of the Africa at that point as a black individual. And the gay and lesbian, which is a perfect example of World War II, as many of the camps, the concentration camps who were liberated, prisoners who identified as gay or lesbian were not liberated. They were not let go at that time, and they were imprisoned for many years after. So, thinking about all of these perspectives, all of these pieces of the iceberg, you know, as we continue through our curriculum.
How do you think that's 1,000 hours?
181 days times six and a half hours. So, granted, elementary teachers have all of that time with their small cohort of teachers, and as you move up through the grades, they share it with many students, but generally speaking, we have 1,000 hours to work with the kiddos. So, what are we teaching? What are we exposing them to? What are we getting them to do? And the end, you know, our goal in preparing them for this rapidly changing world is to know, to care, to act. Here's two DS examples that I know of. So, that's that. That was the presentation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Or?
Can I just say, I was there, and it was really, I thought it was really a powerful presentation, so thank you very much for sharing all that. And I thought the whole intro, the first day back, was really, was really good, that what you did with the letters, I loved, they had pictures of the teachers and their families, what they did over the summer. It was really nice, so thank you.
It was a, it was a nice opportunity that, it's kind of, it reminds me of when I used to coach the little kids in soccer, I think Hannah was actually one of them, and they'd run around at six years old, and as a coach, you're like, "How can I get their attention? How can I get their focus?" And it was, I finally figured out, is that one, two, three, before the game starts, they all come in for the huddle? And that's when I'd say, "Okay, well, we've worked on this, 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 this," and try and, because I had a captive audience. The opening day is like that. You have everyone there, they're really focused, they're not exhausted, they're rested, they're listening, and it's a real opportunity to convey what's really important. And so, there were a couple of things that we wanted to say that was really important. The pictures were representative of the fact that we have lives, beautiful lives, these pictures were amazing, the things that we do with our time, and it's important to share that with others, so to build that sense of community and connectedness, and because if we're doing that, then we're doing that with our kids as well. It's, it's not just about going through the motions of academics, it's about building this sense of community. So, that was, I'm getting ahead of myself. It really was, it was, it was a great morning, and Beth had a lot to do with the two events, the activities. Really, this was not as much an activity, but the starting activity, and then this slide show has a recap, it was excellent.
Any other questions concerned for Beth? Nice job. Yeah, really well done. Okay. Dr. Keo, your report.
Yes, so, I don't want to drone on and on. It really was a good morning, and it was nice to have the staff all together, nice opportunity to remind people of our core values as a district, what we stand for. It was an opportunity to put the strategic goals, I didn't go through the entire district, but to put the strategic goals in front of them so that they're making the connections when they're listening to their principals in their opening meetings, and they're looking at the school improvement plans, they're seeing that this is all connected. Because one of the things that we've heard, that I heard a lot when I first came on board, was that sometimes it feels like we're pulling in a lot of different directions, all positive, but in a lot of different directions. So, the whole idea is to kind of pull in one direction. So, that was an opportunity to kind of send that message. I did also take the opportunity to do something that I've done with new teachers through the years, and that is to ask them to turn and talk to a neighbor about a teacher who's really inspired them or changed their life. And there's a lot of buzz when that goes on, and people automatically think of this person or that person. But then I asked them to turn to that same neighbor and talk about a teacher who'd actually hurt them, an experience that hurt them, it might have been an embarrassing situation, or you might have been called out about something, you know, the parents had been divorced, and the kid didn't want to publicize that, and you know, somehow it came out in class, whatever that situation was. And the teachers share with each other, and usually, when you break out with new teachers, they can, they can recap exactly what happened, where they were, specifics of the setting, sometimes 20, 30, even 40 years later. And the point was to let them know how much power they have as teachers to influence lives, and that we don't ever forget those things. So, it was really, it was awesome. It was great having Ann and Dana representing the regional committee as we gave out our apples, our recognitions for years of service. We have some people who've really served a long time. Dean Bogan, the custodian of the high school, has been here for 30 years, and he got a standing ovation, which I thought was just, just fantastic.
He was very touched.
It was really, it was a special moment. It was great to just be part of that. And so, that was wonderful, and it's a nice tradition. We did shake it up a little bit with that tradition, in that we tried to call people down at once, just to move things along. The other thing that we did this year that was different was, we recognized our teachers who had attained professional teaching status. And in some districts, they'll actually have a ceremony for that, and, because it's a big deal. You know, what we're saying is that if you've attained professional teaching status here, you've really accomplished something, because our expectations are high. And so, we did recognize those folks, and, and that was great. We obviously were out there when the kids were arriving. That too was fantastic, although you know the temperatures were unbearable. I mean, people were rushing into the schools. It was so hot out there. But one of the really nice things that I think I shared in that picture was the chalk on the, on the back walkway. That was, it was really cool being out there and seeing all the kids, and they were just so happy to see each other. That's a beautiful thing, it's a special time of year. So, that was fantastic. I wanted to let you know, the audit continues, and I also wanted to, to explain something about that. We had hoped for the special education, or special education review, I want to correct myself, was, was, was going to be completed, and we'd be able to give you a presentation at the joint meeting in October. That's, it's not looking like it's going to happen. Number one, there's a conflict for Dorsey with that night, she's going to be out of the state. And number two, there's still some groups that she needs to connect with. And the review will really only be complete if people have had their chance to be heard. If it's not done properly, people will feel like it's a flawed report. So, that presents a problem for us, because we really want to tell all of the committees the information at the same time. There could be budget implications if it has anything to do with our structure, if their findings or recommendations strongly recommend a change to our structure there. There really could be financial implications, and our January joint meeting is too late. So, I do think that we're going to...
Can we just move it, ours is the day of the joint? Can we just move it to the end? Is Dover the last one? Can we just move it to piggyback with the Dover meeting?
Yeah, we definitely do.
That would be, that would be perfect. That's a great suggestion. That's what I was going to ask, how you'd like us to do that.
Sure.
Perfect.
We'll come back when you're ready.
Okay. That's fantastic. So, we'll...
Right.
Yeah, which is actually...
Is that the 23rd?
Is it the 23rd? Okay. So, the alternative was to have the presentation of the initial findings, because the full report isn't really going to be ready until January, unfortunately. And that's including all programmatic recommendations, but in terms of changes to potentially our services, the way we're, we're operating, but structurally, we will have some recommendations and findings at that time. So, that's what we would present, and it's actually better that way, because this is a lot of information, and I think it would be too much for one joint meeting.
So, we're going to try and add a meeting on October 23rd?
Yep.
And we think Dorsey can come to that?
Well, that I have to check, but I'm hoping. If she can't, then I'll check with the Dover meeting?
That is the Dover meeting.
Oh, that's the Dover.
Ours is the first weekend in November, right? One of those.
It's the 6th or something like that? Okay. Excellent. So, any other questions about that? Okay, good. The, you know that we have our two candidates coming in tomorrow night for the interim special education director, tomorrow, sorry, tomorrow morning, the special education, interim special education director? Yes, so, eight o'clock, should run about 35 minutes each, and they're back to back. So, that should be a good thing. And then, I hope to, my plan is to make a recommendation to the joint committees prior to the Sherburne meeting on, this is Monday, Monday night. So, that's going to be a challenge, I know, but that's what I'm, I'm aiming for.
Everybody have that on their schedule? Nope. I don't. What do we need it on the, what do we need to do? Come where or when?
Oh, I have it on my calendar.
Because you're on the committee.
Because you're on the committee.
I actually thought I emailed that, but I'm sorry if I didn't.
That's okay.
Oh, you might have, but Monday, September 17th, then it would be before?
Yes.
So, we're... Well, we had 5:30, but you know what? With all of you who work, if it's better, we could do it at the end of the Sherburne meeting.
We could do that.
The end is better for me. I don't know about other people.
Sure. End is better.
So, I'm sorry, this, oh, on the 17th?
That would probably...
I'm out of town, but I can catch up later.
Okay. Maybe not that. We started at 6:30. 7:30, come to 8:00.
So, we're thinking eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock. Go to Sherburne. Where do we go?
Sherburne, and it's, that's at the library. I mean, no, sorry.
We're doing it at Pine Hill.
Yeah, Pine Hill Library, in the school.
In the school.
So, Pine Hill Library.
It's in, well, we should do it, the new auditorium, it's so fancy.
That's where we used to have it.
Did you?
We used to have it.
Really?
We were on it.
Not the library, but the auditorium.
Oh, no, ours was in the auditorium.
Really? Auditorium looks great, has fans.
New carpet, freshly painted.
Sweet apples.
Well, so, it'd be Pine Hill, and the library, where the auditorium... Yeah. Pine Hill, we'll put it, yeah.
We'll put that notification out tomorrow officially.
Great. Thanks.
And then, are we adding October 23rd, then?
October 23rd is a joint meeting.
Needs to be confirmed.
Needs to be confirmed.
But we haven't, we didn't have it on the calendar.
No. No, we had, we're moving the joint earlier.
But we still have our meeting on like the night.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, you can, you can really get the gist of the retreat this summer. I just will say that that's a really worthwhile experience for us. I don't think we were doing that for a few years. I'm sure at various times, they were holding summer retreats. It's really important for the administrators to turn it down a notch after school lets out, and then come back a few weeks later, refreshed and ready, just like the beginning of the year for teachers, ready to have conversations about our work, about the really meaty stuff. And that's what we did, we took advantage of the opportunity to kind of continue to build the relationships. I'm new, Beth's new, Stephen Robleski is new, and, and our strategic plan is new. So, there was a lot to talk about and a lot to focus on, and it's, it's like one of those things where you want to keep steady foot on the gas, not cram things down people's throats. And so, this was a really healthy experience, and you can read more about that there. I mentioned that our hope and plan, as I talked about last year, was to present to the joint school committee meetings the action plans and action steps. You'll recall that thus far, when we're wrapping up the year, we had the strategic plan in place, we had the initiatives in place, but we really hadn't fleshed out, we had some action steps, but we hadn't fleshed out who's doing what when. And so, that's what we really worked on, and the plan was to do that in the retreat. We were actually able to do that in the spring, before school let out over the series of a few leadership team meetings. So, my plan is to go through that at the joint meeting, so that all three school committee meeting, school committees hear the same message. However, we talked about the, the importance of making sure, we talked about the importance of making sure that the community knows that this is a high priority for us. So, in a few minutes, I'd like to actually go through the action steps as it relates to health and wellness of our students. I just think it's an important time to do that. So, I'd like to do that in a few minutes. I want, I, as much as I prefer not to highlight the fact that Dover Sherburne High School was at the top of the list in Best of Boston, and the reason I prefer not to is because it's the kind of thing that can feed into the frenzy, but it is, but it is a testament to the hard work of the teachers, and the students, and the families, and really, the commitment of this community to education. We've had a lot of success here, and just because we're looking at things like health and well-being of our students doesn't mean these other things don't matter. So, this is important to us. So, I want to congratulate our staff and students and families on, on that accomplishment in Best of Boston. And then, finally, I just want to take one minute to thank the leadership team, the central office people, our billing support staff, our custodial and grounds crews, and especially Cheryl, my assistant in the office, for their efforts this summer. It's not easy to shut a school system down and then open it up again eight or nine weeks later, but we were able to do it without a hitch. It was, it was really, it was a smooth operation, and that's a credit to all these hardworking people, so. And that's it.
Great. Any comments? Yes.
I just want to make a comment to say, regarding the Best of Boston, you know, I think about, I think it was about five years ago that we started down the road with challenge success, right? Was it? Four or five years ago? Anyway, I think there was a lot of questions and pressure from the community about would going down the road of starting to pay more attention to health and wellness cost our academic reputation? And I think that while we continue as a district to struggle with that balance, the fact that we've made a substantive commitment to those things, as well as the cultural responsiveness moves, and that in fact, there has not been some kind of dire cost to kids being able to, you know, be successful in the other, you know, ways that that stuff is measured is a testament to everybody's hard work and to putting faith in an initiative that I think is important for kids' human development.
Great point, Maggie.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I've often argued as a school leader that when we have kids who are unfocused because of other issues in their lives, whatever they may be, what other, other pressures are there, and they're slogging through it without any support, that's impacting achievement. That's impacting achievement in a huge way, because most of those kids are likely high performers too, who are being pulled down by some of their struggles. So, it, this is all about SEL, the social emotional learning is part of our learning, it's part of the whole learning experience. So, I think Dover Sherburne's headed in the right direction on that. And challenge success has had, has taken on some pretty big challenges and done some things that were somewhat controversial, and yes, we're still doing quite well. So, excellent point.
Okay. Dawn.
Good evening. I have two separate reports for you tonight. The first one is just taking a look back at fiscal year 18. It really ended the way you thought it was going to end when you left here in June, which is always a good thing.
Yeah.
No, no surprises. So, I just quickly summarize for you sort of the pieces. So, you've got your revenues, set of appropriations, and then how we ended up in totality with the two pieces. I highlighted for you the two significant transactions in fiscal year 18 that impacted the revenues, and just to help you understand that, I also gave you two revenue statements, because there was a lot going on, and it's, I think, important to see if we took those two separate transactions out, where we would have been, and that's the $40,000. So, it gets lost when you see the negative 438, but that's because of, you know, two things that we definitely, one, returning some of the assessments, and two, your decision to put your June Chapter 71 payment into the... to put your June Chapter 71 payment into the regional transportation fund. I'd just like to highlight too, that, you know, looking at the 40,000, that was within 0.1% of our budget. So we are clearly, when the state cooperates with us, we're able to produce a revenue budget that we know is going to be good, the things that we can control. On the status of appropriations, we are within 1% of the budget. So, you know, given that you are your own municipality, you do not want to cut your budget too short. Otherwise, you will be dipping in your E and D. So I think that's the number you should expect, because to get it any closer than that, it could be swinging the other way. So although it seems like it's a lot of money, it's really not when you take it into comparison to your total budget. So we're really leaving the year with a net result of the deficit of 192,000, mainly because of the choices we made. That's gonna leave us with, we did send our E and D package to the DOR. I was hoping to have the final results by this evening, but it is in the final review stages. And at this point, we've had no questions to indicate that they are gonna be any different than what we submitted, which is the million 111 906, which puts you at about a 4.5% E and D balance.
Yeah, of course. So when do you expect to hear?
Probably tomorrow. I mean, we, I really was thinking we'd hear by the meeting today. It was moved on for final approval yesterday morning.
I know that last year, Sherburne was very interested in getting that number as soon as we had it.
Well, they were because they thought there was gonna be money coming back. So there won't be the, the Sherburne decisions that we made, yeah. But I don't, like I said, I've already answered the preliminary reviewers' questions, and she was all set, and it was just going for the final stamp and approval.
Hey, Don, can I just ask you a quick favor? Can you just in shorthand, just really quickly review why the June's Chapter 71 transportation payment went into the reserve fund?
Right, we did that because we knew we were gonna run in excess of our 5%, and we were trying to strategically sort of work with the region's money to, rather than penalize us for having some, because then we also had a little bit of extra state money received, and we were having some favorable operating results. We had that discussion with the towns that we would like to put that money in the fund. What's gonna happen, it's gonna create an additional surplus for you in fiscal year 20, and indirectly, we'll be using some extra money to fund capital. It's sort of a convoluted, you know, moving around, but in a nutshell, you've got about 250,000 now that we can already say is dedicated to funding fiscal year 20 capital.
Which is approximately how much?
Well, it's changing, but at least probably, probably like a million, over a million. Yeah. So we felt that was a smart way to utilize the region's money.
Thank you.
And quarterly, we provide you your status, or a, yeah, statement for your special revenue and revolving funds. So you have that since June 30th. I'll just highlight that the food service is continuing to produce positive operating results, which is great. The participation rate did climb up like 3%. Part of that could be because you have been doing the pilot program with the nutritionist. So do you do think that is making a difference? A little bit. Some of the new menu items they're offering, Janelle's definitely seen an uptick in the number of meals purchased on those days. And I think for Janelle, it's just really great to have another mind to work with and set, to give her some special projects to do. So I think all in all, that's been a really great initiative. And the two locals also sort of benefit from that a little bit, because she really works with us as a district. So my guess is we'll continue with that. I assume there's probably a committee that's looking at that, but that's worked out really well. And Janelle's also just shared with me is rolling out a whole new website. So we will, but yeah, she's, it has a lot of nutritional analysis to it, so parents will be able to go pull the menu and see the nutritional analysis. So I think that's gonna be going live soon. I'll make sure, for those of you who don't have kids in the system, that you sort of get that link. Would that have allergy information on there too, all that? Oh, great. It's a purchase site that she's using, but it just gives her so much more capability. So that's exciting. And then you'll also see that we received at the end of the year additional money from Mudge Foundation. We'll talk about that in the fiscal year 19 report, because there was a bigger project, but that was an increase in your miscellaneous gifts. Any questions on that statement?
Can I ask questions?
Yeah, just identify yourself, please.
Susan O'Hara, an Sherburne advisor. I just had a couple of questions. So on the transportation, the money coming back from this thing for transportation is not going into a transportation fund, or it is?
It did. One of our payments did last for fiscal year 18.
Okay. And then, but how does that play out to the capital?
Well, because normally that goes into the general operating fund to cover, to offset expenses.
Okay. But you've got a surplus.
By putting it into the regional transportation fund, we have to use that money to pay transportation costs in fiscal year 20, I mean fiscal year 19, although we funded. We built our budget, so it will be a surplus, and we're gonna use that surplus to fund capital from the region piece of it versus having to ask the town for a larger amount.
Okay, so you're using operating to fund capital? And that's okay?
It's not really, it's not really operating, it's gonna flow through E and D. We're really using E and D. So we're facilitating it through E and D. We can use our E and D fund for whatever the committee would like.
Okay, for the capital piece.
So yes, we've, we've worked out with the towns last year that we would use this.
But if you put it into E and D, you would have been over the 5%, and therefore, that would have been a turnback.
Correct.
Okay, so this is a way to avoid a turnback to the towns?
Correct.
Turnback in the capital fund for a month.
Well, it was, it was to use them, it was to use the money wisely. Like, we strategically started talking about this back in March as the committee.
And also to use it to decrease the amount that will go back to the towns at town meeting this year for capital.
Reduce the ask, it will reduce the ask.
The capital ask, FY 20.
And this was primarily because 20 and 21 are anticipated to be two very big capitals.
Because we have to replace the roof, and so we know the roof is super expensive, so we're trying to make, mitigate the future.
Right.
Yeah, so I think the language is really important. We're very careful that it's, it's not that we didn't do a turnback, it's that we've.
We made a strategic decision on how to utilize the region's funds, which is.
Which would, that would still benefit the towns, because it reduces the ask.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
Wouldn't facilitate increasing more capital, or you already have your capital plan, and that's laid out?
We, we know we have a large capital ask, so we're trying to help balance the request to the towns. So that was the plan, was to know that we had a piece of, piece of that, that the region could contribute, and therefore reducing what we were asking the towns for in fiscal year 20. Great, thanks, Don, that was great. Just quickly, you know, just to let you know, we do file your end of the year report, and the annual audit's starting next week. And we'll shoot for December for your audit report, as we have in the past. Any other questions on 18? Okay, moving on to fiscal year 19, I have a few pieces of information that we already can share with you. One is the final budget was released in late July, and I can report that at this point in time, barring any changes in our school choice and charter school enrollments, that we're looking at a little more than $29,000 over what we budgeted for Chapter 70. Chapter 71, on the other hand, right now, is about $62,000 more than we budgeted, primarily to the initiatives from the state to increase funding levels for transportation. They're anticipating that we may see up to 80% of reimbursement on transportation this year. That is almost an 8% or so increase. So that's what we've been told is gonna happen, and therefore, that's sort of what is showing up in the final cherry sheet versus the one that we used when we did your budget back in December.
How reliable is that figure?
The cherry sheet, I always, the, see, the transportation is a little bit interesting. I haven't quite figured out where they pull their, their initial cherry sheet from, because what we actually get in reimbursement is based on our end of the year report and our actual transportation costs multiplied by whatever their reimbursement percentage is gonna be.
Okay.
So some of it, we could probably figure, now that I'm filing our end of the year report, I will be able to take our actual transportation costs minus some adjustments that they make, apply the percentage to it, and see how close this is. But typically, we actually see a little bit more in transportation than, than the cherry sheet.
Okay.
Because at the end of the year, just like they do with some other funds, whenever there's leftover funds, they go back and they give everyone a little bit more to make sure they expend whenever it was budgeted.
Right.
There's been a, there's been a hard push by the part of regional schools to get the transportation where it should have been.
Right.
Because remember, that was the incentive to regionalize.
Regionalize, yeah.
And so last year, there was a real push. We were contacting state reps and legislators about, about this bill that was going forward, and it, it bore fruit.
Right, it did. And there are some that they haven't quite figured out, so I didn't want to put this in the report, but they also put in some motions of supplemental budget appropriations for fiscal year 18. So we could potentially see a little bit more transportation money for 18. They're not sure if they would like have it retroactive to 18 some way and give you a way to deal with that, or just add it to 19. And the same is gonna be true with Circuit Breaker. So until now the legislative is back in session, they weren't quite sure how that was going to work mechanically. I still haven't heard, but there could be even some additional funds coming, because they did those appropriations really after the end of the year.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all, all very good news on that end. And I will also provide your first status of appropriations as of September 30th at your October meeting. Right now, we're doing all the first payrolls, getting everything encumbered, and so it's, it will have a really good sort of snapshot of where we are for you as of September 30th. Just piggybacking on what Dr. Keough said on facilities and grounds, our custodial staff does go into overtime in the summer, works really hard, because as you know, this is also the time of year that we try to accomplish all of our capital projects. So it is bustling around here, not with students, but with workmen. So it's always something new and different every day, which is exciting. I wanted to share with the committee, because if you remember back in our capital planning days, we talked about purchasing a large aerator machine for our fields. Well, our very capable groundskeeper, Chris Hendricks, found a smaller version that serves us extremely well, that we allowed him to purchase last, this past spring. Drive by, you might see writing on it, but it is really, it has been very useful. He's done almost all the fields, and Andrew and I were both noticing how even this football field this summer with the rain, really, it makes a huge difference.
The softball field, the softball field was, was gone. It looked like it had died for the season, and that aerator went to work.
You see the little pellets, just like you think.
And it's ripe. I mean, it's really rich right now, that's.
So I applaud him, because he realized we don't need the bigger, remember, we were talking about buying one like at a golf course we use. So he kept doing his research and found a model that fit our budgetary needs and really serves the district well. So that was a huge improvement. I want to make sure I pointed that out. I mentioned the generous gift from the Mudge Foundation in late June, and we received, you have two additional payments that you're approving tonight on your consent agenda. But back in March, we had started talking about a need in the Mudge auditorium, because the current dimmer rack was starting to fail. And the initial estimates they were giving me for replacement of that was like $50,000 to $60,000. I give credit again to our people and groups that work with our facilities, because they said, rather than just replace what we had with, with that, how could we think bigger? And so they did a lot of research, and we decided the best course for us was to retrofit all of our stage and theater lighting with LED lights. By doing that, you don't need a dimmer rack, because everything is controlled from a little control board, because the whites do so much more with the LED. It also is very energy efficient, and the heat, there is no more heat that's produced from the lights. And the capabilities that they have, it increases what they can do with the lighting. And so this was a proposal put together from our, our, sort of our drama people here, and I assisted them with the numbers, but it was presented to the Mudge Board June 16th or 17th, I believe, and was accepted. With that, and the fact that we found out that the prices were gonna go up, we did escalate this, this project, so that we could buy the fixtures before the price increase went in effect, and is almost completely ready to roll. So that is, was great news, and I, High School Musical is gonna be, they're all gonna look great. But I think that was a really smart way, and I applaud again, the people who said, let's just not do the things that we've always done. What's the better way to do it? So it will give us a state of the art facility, which is why we're very gracious to the Mudge Foundation for allowing us to have something on this level.
Thank you, Mudge.
Thank you.
Yes. Can I ask to say safer too?
Yes. Exactly. And it's a lot less fixtures sort of up there, and what they've also done is take some of the old fixtures and have set up an arrangement that with a flick of a switch, anyone who's in there doing presentations or assemblies, they will have the light that's needed. The LED lights will be used predominantly really just for shows, dress rehearsals and shows, but they've left us with a nice setup to be used for other activities. And so we will be doing some training with all of our users, and we're supposed to be doing a little manual for the new lighting board for the non-theatrical lighting. So, and we'll probably continue to do some cleanup in there. There actually is quite a bit of equipment in that control room and in the backstage that is sort of outdated, obsolete, and not used. And rather than let it still stay there, we're gonna look at, you know, having it cleaned up and removed. So.
Let's point that out at town meetings this year.
Yeah.
Highlight the new lighting.
The new lighting. Well, as it's town meeting, I will say both towns noticed that we did change all of our lights out for LED, because the, it was much brighter in there. And that savings alone is supposed to be immense, because of the light bulbs that are used in there, and they probably won't have to change them for our lifetimes if they tell, if what happens, if what they tell us happens, it's gonna happen. Which is good, because we can't get to some of those light bulbs.
Details, details.
It's a risk, every time you put somebody on a crane or bucket.
In the ceiling and changed them.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't want that.
So just briefly, I gave you a status report of your capital projects. As you know, from fiscal year 15, we're still holding some monies for the Lenquist doors. I did not get complete confirmation, but I think that all the doors were complete as of today. It was a staged process, and what we found was that our contractors were just either overbooked or short-staffed. And so a lot of our projects did sort of carry on longer than we thought, and the doors was one of them. It got a little bit of a delay, because they were all custom-made doors, and they did not come in exactly when they were supposed to. But every door in Mudge now has been replaced. You'll notice that they do look nice and bright and shiny. And with that, all of, we've completed our ADA conversion plan that we talked to you about. So the last door that had not been done in the back of Lenquist now is, now ADA compliant. It will be as of next week, I believe. It's not quite, they have to come and do the hookup. But we've completed all the ADA compliant entryways in all the main traverses. So that's, that is very good to say. So we did, we will come in a little bit under on the doors. The final bills aren't quite in, but that is, we did not exceed, so that was good news. So then when we finish the doors, year 15 will be closed out. Year 16, we've already closed out and returned money to the towns. We're holding a little bit more on for 17, just we have like $3,400 left. As you know, there was a feasibility study that we still haven't just had time to attack. Once we do that, we can use that money to fund it, and then we'll create operating funds, whatever's left. As far as 18 goes, that's where you see the last of the doors. And the really big project that we still need to attack is the EMS upgrade. And that is definitely, is on our radar. It is a very, very important project, and so we want to make sure we take the time to do it right. After we do, the region upgrade, Chicreen is already slated to put on their fiscal year 20, an EMS upgrade for Chicreen, and then Pine Hill would follow suit. So I am starting to do research and look for, for some consultants to help us with this project, because it's not something that we would internally do ourselves. So that's sort of what's holding it up a little bit, is just having time to sort of meet with some consultants and try to find someone to come on board to get us started with that process. On night, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to ask, but what is, what is?
Energy management system, I'm sorry. Energy management system. So that controls all of our. So that controls all of our heating and, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're all on schedules here. It's all sort of automated. We could be even better. And the goal is to be able to say, Mr. Kelly's on his boat in the lake, he can actually go on his phone and be able to see if there's a problem or change timing. So that's what we're aiming for. It should also give us a lot more energy efficient than we have now, because our system is sort of old. As you can see, when you came in, we have beautiful new asphalt paving. And the wonderful news that I have, that I wasn't even able to share with the subcommittee when we met, was that the pricing came in unbelievably lower than we thought. But also, we changed what we sort of were going to do. The pricing that we carried in our budget request included complete scarifying of every inch of pavement, and then a repave. The town of Dover, because we piggyback with them, doesn't recommend that you do that every time, just every couple of times. So Craig Hughes came and worked very closely with Mr. Kelly. We only had to sort of do some extra work around the curbs where the handicapped ramps are. And other than that, we did an overlay, which was a huge cost saving that, that takes your costs down by about half, because you don't have to do the labor work, but you also don't have to get rid of all that you tear up. So there's savings there. And then Craig Hughes did tell us that his pricing came in $4 per ton less than he thought. Not quite sure how that all translates into the pricing, but he was overly excited about that price. So based on that, our total cost of what we did pay to date was only $57,651. Craig has recommended that, because he's locked in this price till June 30th, that we continue on with our paving design and use up the rest of that money and make use of the great pricing that he has. So we're working with, his preliminary recommendation to us is to continue the, from Farm Street all the way down the bus ramp, all the way to backs to the high school where it meets with the Junction Street entrance we already did, and both high school lots. He thinks that we have enough money in the 170 that we asked for to complete all of that. If that is the case, then we will dramatically reduce what we have in the outlying years for paving, which will give some financial relief to the capital ask. Again, we're following what the town of Dover does for their roads. Next time you do this, you probably will have to tear it up, but they highly suggested this is the way that we should do it. And that coupled with the really good pricing they got on the open market led to, when I got this bill, I was like, this can't be, can't be the case. But he explained it to us. And definitely wants to make use of the pricing that he has. He's doing some extra work, too, and he's also encouraged us to. So I'll work with the subcommittee. Ralph is going to come up with sort of taking off the next bite of what I just described. We can show you how much square footage it is and how it will reduce your out years. But get the committee's approval, and then we'll just check in with both capital committees to make sure that they're comfortable that it makes a lot of economical sense to take advantage of this.
And they can do it.
They'll do it either April break or as soon as school gets out.
That's our great news. That's nice to hear.
That is, that is great news. That is really great news for, because that, again, we're still trying to creatively think forward about the capital asks in 20 and 21. And so this is, this is really, you know, Dawn talks about spending smarter. This is a credit to her, and especially, or along with Craig Hughes, who, it's not costing Dover more money to do this, it's just allowing us to use our resources effectively. So this is a really, really huge win for us.
Right, right. And it worked really nicely to coordinate with Craig. You'll notice there's one part of our parking lot that they came today and had to scarify. We had a little bit of a, a pool where it didn't quite get level, but they came right back, and that's all going to be taken care of. It's going to be repaved on Friday. But very reactive when we called and proactive and got it done, and so we're.
A really good and professional crew as well.
Yeah, great, definitely, definitely. On the other things, I'll just note that we had hoped that the Lenquist floors would be done over the summer. Due to using two crews at two of our schools, we had a longer job that with, that ran on at Pine Hill, which put them behind, and they weren't able to get in here before the activity started. So we're already booked for winter break for them to come in and do the floor. So that'll be nice. They actually, the custodians didn't think that was such a bad time to do that. So, and then the other thing is Janelle's walk-in freezer and refrigeration is custom ordered. That didn't get here in time to be installed. And once she opens school, it's really hard to even use a day or two. So she's already scheduled that to be done over winter break, and she'll just make sure she cleans out those two facilities for the break anyway.
So are the Lenquist floors new tiling? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Would it make sense to wait until after all the salt and grime of the winter and do it over April break instead?
No, I talked to the custodians, and I can't remember exactly why, but they actually didn't think that was a bad idea when we were doing it.
Okay.
They're the bosses.
Are those, we're replacing those floors with the new type of floor, right?
Grippier floor.
That doesn't need any, it doesn't need any fancy strip-y stuff, right?
Yes. And when you go to the meeting over at Pine Hill, you can see that they just did all their hallways in the same kind of flooring and in their cafeteria. And their cafeteria has the same size tiles that we're using in Lenquist, just not as much color as they did. But that give you a good feel of what that's going to look like.
And it's the same as what's done in Chickering the year before?
Yes, in their cafeteria the year before. So it's the, yeah, it's the vinyl planking that you can get in different sizes and, you know, great variety of designs and colors. So it's been what we're moving for. And if I can convince our custodian at Pine Hill that he doesn't have to strip and wax, and that means they're really good. He's not, he's not quite sure about that. Any other questions? I sort of hit the highlights. As you can see, most of our projects are complete. My son in the locker room actually said it looks better in the voice. I know, so I thought that was pretty cool.
It also looks like you're, I mean, that you're estimating is, is pretty, it, some are higher, some are lower, but in general, the.
Yeah, and I will say, on the concrete replacement, why you sort of see a bigger difference there than we normally see is that we did the project a little more involved than we talked about in the, in the, when this first went out. We put in a French drain, and if you go and see, you'll actually see where they, you know, to dig up, trench it and put it in. But I will say, these heavy rains that we've just had, the custodian staff has told, custodial staff has told me there has not been any water at all even getting near the doors.
That's great.
At nursing and guidance. So that has served us well, because we have had a couple of heavy downpours.
Anything we can do to avoid the floods.
Exactly. So you'll notice that when you go over, you can definitely see how it rolls down. The water would go into those drains and down to the drain versus trying to go to the doors. So that was money worth, you know, really worthwhile spend. So that's capital projects. We will have your first draft for 20 along with 21 through 24, probably at your November meeting, for your preview, and then it'll roll out with your budget. Just bringing up as new things that we'll talk about in 19, or not new things, but things will continue. I just wanted to highlight that, well, the employee benefits subcommittee did meet last week, and we are intending to continue discussions with funding our OPEB. You did set up the OPEB trust last year with the vote. But with everything else going on, we really didn't have time to dig in. So that would be the plan this year, is to sort of get a little more educated on it, continue to meet with the towns to see what their desire is for the region with that funding potential, and sort of let it play out. Just to keep in mind, the timeline is such that it does need to correlate with your budget, because any funding that goes into the trust needs to be built into your budget and taken to both towns for approval. So you have until obviously March to make that decision. But it gives you at least a timeline that we have to keep adhered to to make sure there's some funding that you want to do for fiscal year 20. Any other questions on 19? That was great. Thank you, Dawn. That was terrific.
Really just thank you, thank you, because that was a huge, the closing.
Well, I have to say, yeah. And, and we have a great office. I was just thinking about that tonight. I mean, I have so many people who work for us and with us, and we have a great team, but we do take on a lot. And so I very appreciate, everyone does multiple things and carries their weight, but we can't all do it alone. So it's a great team. Yeah.
All right. So moving on to item five, the appointment of the middle school nurse. Dr. Keo, do you want to talk about that?
Do we do that on the consent agenda? Have we moved that to the consent agenda?
You talked about pulling it.
I wanted to hold it.
Okay.
Just so we could talk about it, and new members could know that this is our appointment and get some up to speed.
Sorry, I was just pulling it because it seemed to make sense that it, that we should be having that conversation.
No problems.
So I guess, since it is going to get pulled, would you want to talk about it now? Does that work for you?
Yeah. So, so we have hired a nurse at the middle school. It is technically a position that's overseen by the regional school committee. I'm not sure I know what, what it is you'd like to know about it.
Well, I just think because it is our appointment, so the other committee members know that it's not unlike the special ed director.
But it should have come here first.
Is this manager, right? And we vote to appoint that person.
I see.
So that's, you know, so, you know, because we have to have a vote on that. I just wanted to hear about the person and the process and the selection.
So I can tell you a little bit about Margaret. She is, she's actually a Dover resident and has been working in nursing for many, many years in Boston in an emergency room. And is kind of well-versed in the kinds of surprise events that can happen. And is a very calm presence, a very organized individual. She's on top of the kinds of trainings that teachers need. There's a lot that they have to go through. She's on top of the, the software that we use, is a quick learner, and is, is I think really blending in to the fabric of the school very, very well. You'll see her around. I see her emails going out to staff about different trainings and important things for them to know. So I feel like she's done a really good job. And if I, if she should have come to the committee first, I apologize for that as the recommendation. That was, that was my mistake.
And how long is the contract for?
It is a three-year contract.
So we're appointing her for a three-year contract.
Oh, she's, sorry, she's on the teacher's contract, so they're, they're no longer out of the contract. So she's in the teacher's unit, unit A.
So she's, will take three years to earn professional teacher status like the other teachers in the three-year contract. So that gives you three years to evaluate her work on an ongoing basis, and then at the end of that, three years. Okay. Thank you.
Good. All right. Any other questions about?
Do you need a vote on that?
Okay. Invite any motions?
So I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Margaret Persons as the middle school nurse, according to the teacher's contract.
Second. All in favor? Thanks very much. That was great. Thank you. Now we're going to have a review of strategic objectives with Dr. Keo.
Yes, so one objective in particular, the health and well-being of staff and students.
Oh, can I just make one? Just so for those of you guys who weren't at the opening of school, when he mentioned health and well-being of staff as well as students, the whole audi, the whole auditorium broke into applause.
That's great.
So the fact that, that it's part of our strategic plan is very important to our community.
Thank you for pointing that out. I, the, did you see my surprise? It caught me off guard. I wasn't expecting that, but it really is, it's a good thing to recognize that our teachers are also under a lot of pressure these days. They feel pressured, just like the students. And so they, they were very appreciative of that particular goal. So what I was hoping to do, you all have in your packets, a look at the action steps. They're so very, very finely printed, and I know that it's, it's going to be, it's a wonder that I can see them, that's for sure. I should hand out magnifying glasses for this. Well, this is, this is our attempt to kind of squeeze it onto one page. But essentially, what I'd like to do, if I can, is just kind of, just back up for just a minute and explain why we, we, why we talked about including this in this week's discussion or this week's agenda. I think that sometimes people misunderstand school leaders and think that perhaps we don't hear what's on the minds of kind of parents. We're not aware, we're either oblivious or not listening. And so I really want to state for all of you and for all those masses at home who are listening, that this is actually, this is actually my life's work. This is my passion. I was an alternative education teacher before anything else. My work has been, throughout my career, has been focused on making sure that all kids feel as if they're part of their school. And if you're an alternative ed teacher, believe me, you know your kids are not always welcome. They're in there for a reason. Fortunately, we've come a long way as a society in how we educate our kids who are more challenging. And, but this, this is, is my passion. And I want to make sure that people understand that, because that's not something you can switch off. That said, when, when, when I hear of tragedies such as the one experienced this weekend, it breaks my heart. It hits me right in the core. And that's because I always believe we should be trying even harder, no matter what, even harder. And so we will 100% promise, we will keep this a priority. And what you see in front of you is really hours and hours of, of work, thinking, and spending time, you know, contemplating and, and thinking about how can we possibly make our system, which is, by the way, very good and very supportive, but how can we make it better? And these, these are the things that the leadership team came up with. And I think it's a pretty inclusive list. But see, when I look at the language, things jump out at me, and I know exactly where it's going. And that's why I kind of wanted to go through at least some of these. I don't know that we should go through every single piece. And some Beth is better prepared to speak to than I am, especially if we're getting, getting into the curriculum questions. But we also included a couple under resource efficiency and partnerships, those two goals, because they, they are supporting the social, emotional well-being of our students. So if that's okay with you, that's kind of what I'd prefer to do, is just kind of maybe perhaps jump through the ones that I think that you need more information on, or maybe the people at home need more information on. And then if you see something that I've overlooked, you'd like us to speak further to, we could do that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so what this is, is on, under the action step, you've seen those action steps before. We got that far in last year. What we didn't do was assign point people, and the associates are the people who they will work in collaboration with. And then we have a year one, year two, and a year three plan. The outcomes are what we hope to see happen as a result of these things. Goals for schools are not always all-inclusive. They're not the only things that we're concentrating on. Or we may not have specifically outlined all of the work that would fall under the work of, say, a social, emotional learning committee. But, but they give us a good kind of benchmark. So under the, the last partnership objective, which would be the third one, if you look over, that says to provide opportunities for elementary and secondary parents to connect and share their experiences, advice, and develop. and share their experiences, advice, and develop a network of support. So it's being overseen by the director of guidance with assistance of the challenge success committee. But I have to say, all of these, I feel like are my responsibility ultimately. So I want to make sure that these things happen too. But the, in year one, the work is intended to, it says, work with guidance advisory group members to explore the ideas of a mentor-like parent-to-parent program or series of parent nights on various topics. If you remember last year, we were talking about the importance of parents' understanding in advance, the risks of getting caught up in the intense competition at the expense of their children. There's, there's balance. Balance is a really important thing and it's easier for me to say now in retrospect, but as a parent, I could have really benefited from some conversations with people who have just been through the same thing that I was going through. So the, the goal is to share, share, allow people to share this information or perhaps even not just parents, perhaps even hear from veteran teachers about the, the characteristics of the kids who seem to be resilient and what it is that they do that makes them successful. What, what, what is it, what are the qualities that, um, that, that seem to, you know, give them this balance? And so that's really the aim of that particular.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
You know, I was just talking to someone about this, um, this week earlier.
Last night.
Last night.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and so to see this here is really fabulous, but I'm, there are a lot of, there are a lot of organizations like the one that Meg Fields does, this CPAC, that where they have panels and they have experts come in. But I was saying to Ann at my synagogue, there's a group of parents, there's, and it's peers, it's not even facilitated by a psychologist or anything, that get together on a regular basis, parents of kids who have had, you know, serious social and emotional issues. And they mentor one another and they, you know, it's something, from something so simple as giving people, here's some good, um, you know, providers in the area that your, your child may want to go to. But I, I think that more of those, that model in, for me, as a parent, has done much more in terms of mentoring than to bring panels. I don't know if you're going there or you're thinking about that, but it's something that's really, that Ann and I were talking about is something that we don't do here and that, you know, except maybe in the area of CPAC. That would be really valuable, I think.
So, uh, yes, I totally agree. It's valuable. And yes, that is where I hope we're going, better connection between the parents. But I, but I think also to, to your concern or the concern that your synagogue folks have figured out is that sometimes it's not enough to bring in a speaker in ninth or 10th grade. Like sometimes these conversations should have taken place 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Right? Because, you know, um, these messages are instilled early on. And so I love the fact that Dover Sherwin has taken advantage of the great speakers out there. We're blessed to have the resources to bring in some of the people we've brought in, but let's continue that and let's continue the conversations between, because sometimes, and the other thing is, is like, we kind of have to push this a little harder because unfortunately, frequently when you hold an event, that some of the people who need to hear it most don't come.
So I was going to do my statement, I think a lot of the people who could benefit for this or are, who are yearning for this are not the people who are going to raise a hand and say, yeah, I want to go to a challenge success event at somebody's house. And so how do we, you guys figure out what does inclusive mean?
And maybe you do it from sort of a grassroots where you talk to parents that you know who might be able to, you know, delete, like for example, Heidi Wando knows who those parents are who are on top of these things and might be able to on a more grassroots level find those parents who, who really need it but aren't coming to meetings. I don't know.
But, and when you said earlier, I was thinking something that came to my mind was to have recent graduates come back.
Yes.
And, and have that open discussion, not, not just like the transition to college night, but the, what did DS help me do or what was I most fearful about or what worked and what didn't work? What do I wish my mother had said to me when I was in the ninth grade?
So that's actually a really good idea. Now, is there something like that and where would that plug in? Because I think this one right here, this works really nicely with what challenge success is doing and we can see a deliverable in a year that that could actually very easily seg into their work. And so that's something we would expect and that's exciting. Where would, something like this, which seems like a really interesting thought of having some alums come by, where do you think we could see something like that?
I think personally down to the focus on anti-bullying, marginalization, community building through actions and communications that specifically teach and reinforce the district's core values. I, I think that that, um, that action step, uh, really, I, I was talking with Beth about this and I haven't had a chance to process this with the leadership team, but it's been on my mind a lot. It's an opportunity for us to consider combining the efforts of our wellness committee into a broader committee of social emotional wellbeing. The, the wellness committee, nutrition, do not get me wrong, is important, but right now for this system, our priority is the social emotional wellbeing of our kids. That is crystal clear. So we're thinking that putting together a committee that is broad-based, pre-K to 12, with representation across the board, that first of all, looks at what the experience is like for our kids. This is question one. And you remember that I talked when I first came here about what are our nondiscussables? Remember that? This is kind of one of our nondiscussables. I hate to say it, but it really is and it has been since I was a kid. We don't really want to talk about what the experience is like for everyone. And it's important that you have that data in order to ensure that all of the kids, A, know that you care about all of the kids and B, that you're being responsive to what they're saying. So the fact that I did my dissertation on student voice ties in very nicely to this because what I was saying in my dissertation was, and in my research or hoping to find and did find, was that when you listen to the kids, A, they tell you what's going on, B, they feel better because you actually took time to listen to them, inform the relationship, and C, have a better sense of belonging, and D, perform better. So it's all linked up. So I'm thinking that in response to your question, that if we have a SEL committee that first of all examines what the experience is for the kids, but let's ask them about the experience. And you know what? I love the Utherus Behavior Survey. It's a good survey. We get good information from that, but maybe we need to be even a little more specific with the terminology we use with kids. Ask them questions about how they perceive kids treat each other. To this end, I'm happy to say that at the high school in the NEASC self-study that John and his team have done, they're, they're being honest. They're being honest with what their data collections are finding and they're acknowledging that some of our students do sometimes feel like it's hard to have a conversation with an adult. Or sometimes it is hard to belong. It's a small school system. We don't have the benefit of, you know, hundreds of cohorts of, of different groups of kids. We're a small school system and a very competitive school system. It's hard to turn off competitiveness. We all know that. So I think that this dovetails nicely with the work that they're aiming at at the high school. I think it dovetails nicely with one of the other goals down the, down the way on advisories, which is also another way of connecting with the kids, connecting the adults with the kids. So I don't know if I answered your question, Lori, it was a bit of a rant, but I do think that that's where the recommendations, it does not say that in year one, but that's where I think that the recommendations and generation of ideas on how we would set up those kinds of events, where we connect people perhaps with our graduates or connect people with college professors who tell them, you know? Everyone has in their mind, I would like my kid to go to an Ivy League school, let's hear from some Ivy League professors about the kids who are most successful in their classes, you know? And, and think about that because I think a lot of times what you'll hear from my friends, I have a friend who's a college professor and he'll say it's the kids who have resilience, who are adaptable, who don't take themselves too seriously, they have fun, they, you know, these are the things we need to concentrate on. So, um, I hope that answers that.
No, it does. It was actually, that's really helpful.
And I, so I've jumped ahead to one of the ones that I really wanted to talk to. I have a couple others that I'd just like to highlight without going on all night. The, um, we talked about partnerships with local health and wellness agencies about halfway down the page related to professional op, uh, development opportunities. In the past 24 hours, sadly, our teachers have had conversations with experts in, in health and wellness, in this case from Riverside Trauma. And even before school this morning in a faculty meeting, the teachers heard from an expert in the field and how to respond in the aftermath of a crisis such as the one we just are currently going through really. And the teachers were so grateful. They were really, really thankful to know how to have a conversation with kids when things like this come up because a lot of times they're afraid. They don't know what to say. So the conversation gets squelched and the message to the kids is either, A, it's not that important or we don't have time for it, we need to focus on our studies. And that's not an intended message, but that can happen. So I think that finding ways to have these conversations with kids and providing our teachers with the training so that they can do it is really worthwhile. So that's really where that goal is, is headed. If we go down a little bit further, as we talked about the, the wellbeing of our faculty and administrators as, as far as I'm concerned, there are things that we can do for teachers and administrators to give them support. And I'll give you an example. When I was the principal at Wellesley High School, we met on a monthly basis with a counselor from HRS, and we, I mean my administrative team. So, uh, human resource services in Wellesley, it was provided. As employees of the Wellesley Public Schools, you were entitled to a certain number of, you could do individual visits as well. This was something you were entitled to as just part of being an employee in Wellesley. But we also had support for our administrative team. I can't tell you how valuable that was. To be able to talk to someone outside about the challenges we're facing in here on a daily basis when you're under kind of what feels like a microscope. So we want to look into, into that. I mean, we have a relationship with HRS, we have a relationship with Riverside. Is there, are there things that we could do to provide better support for our staff and administrators? So that's really where that goal is, is headed. I'll, I'll, I'll speed this up. You, you see a third from the bottom, revisit school start times to include review of applicable current research, assessment of school community interest, and examination of comparable school start times. I do not need additional research sent to me. People send me research about this all the time. I feel like I'm pretty current. I understand that the American Pediatrics Association has said, find a way to give your adolescent teens an hour more sleep. It's not a simple flick of the switch. This warrants more conversation. We do need to reconvene the start time committee to see if we can come up with creative solutions because we are limited in our resources. I don't know that we have the funding, for example, to run a second fleet of buses completely independent of the elementary schools. That to me could be a nondiscussable. And then the, one of the other alternatives that I know has been floated is whether or not we could just reverse the elementary and the secondary kids. I've been through that conversation in my previous experience and basically it goes like this. You can't do that. We work, who's going to watch my kids in the afternoon if my older kids are getting out and my little kids are getting off the bus? Who's going to make sure that the kids are safe when they go out in the morning and it's dark out, these little elementary kids? The high school kids, I think, were surveyed and said things like, well, this is going to interfere with our athletic program. So these are real challenges. They're not simple solutions. And so that committee will come back together to look and see if there's anything we missed. Maybe there's a way we can make an adjustment. There might be things we could do to find some time in the schedule that works for everyone. That's the goal of that committee. We have the second from the bottom, the research and if appropriate, develop advisories. I don't really need to talk about that further. That is on the list of things to do in year one for the high school and middle school administration. And finally, one that I think is really important and actually came up yesterday in the presentation with Johanna Bridger, who's actually Josh Bridger's wife from Riverside, is related to this idea of reviewing our schedule and implement systems that specifically provide for increased downtime recess for kids at the elementary and middle school levels. She was pointing out that the research shows that that's one of the best ways to actually support the wellbeing of our kids, one of the very best. But if you need further evidence, come down during the middle school break that Scott just implemented this year. It's 11 minutes after they eat out on the field. It is a treat. And the kids are flying around, running around, and I, I will bet anything that this is going to pay dividends. I'll bet you anything that the teachers are going to come back and say they are so much more focused after lunch. This was the best thing we ever did. But as further evidence of that, we had our leadership team scheduled, which we unfortunately had to cancel this morning, but it was scheduled for this morning and it meant that Scott and Stephen Moblesky were going to have to be at the leadership team meeting. So they sent out a notice to the faculty, is anybody willing to cover this? And they had literally 15 volunteers who were going to use their own time to, to go out and supervise this. So there's real buy-in. I think our kids are going to benefit in ways that we probably will never be able to measure. So, and that's just getting going. So this is a big goal. There may be other opportunities as well. So those are the ones that jump out at me. There are others on here. Certainly the cultural responsiveness is huge in so many ways. The challenge success work has to continue. The ID, the ideas training, you may have heard of empowering multicultural initiatives, that's the ideas training. That was required for every teacher in my former system, Wellesley. Every teacher had to go through it, maybe in EMI as well, the EMI training. But, um, so these are all on our list and I just want people to know that, that we're placing a high priority on this.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any brief comments? Any questions? Okay. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So moving on to the consent agenda. Any holds?
I just had one addition on the minutes of our, so, oh, do you want me to just save? Okay. If, when we were talking, the boosters, the facilities face to update, I just wanted to add a sentence at the end because we talk about how we need to make some decisions on athletic behavior and naming rights. And I just wanted to add a sentence that says the committee will work with boosters to gather data to aid in that decision-making. So just to make it clear that we're, that, that gathering data, we, that they can help us with, with data gathering as well. I mean, we will make the final decision. So maybe that wasn't clear.
How does the committee does that?
Yeah.
They can work with boosters?
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make it clear that we weren't going off in, that it's doing everything, that we can use their knowledge of and contacts to help gather data so that we can make a decision.
So Amy, did you get that?
I'll. I'll send you something. Is that okay?
Something along the lines of, were you willing to work together and looking forward to working together?
Well, I would say in the whole process, we're working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just want to make it clear that, because the way it can be read is that, that they're not helping in the data gathering, and I think that we can use some help in data gathering.
Okay.
So I was just trying to clarify that.
I'd like to, well, I was going to say, I think it's even more that not just they have to, it's not our responsibility to do all of the data gathering, it's sort of...
Well, we're the policy, you and I are Maggie and Maggie's policy subcommittee.
Well, not just policy stuff, though. In general.
I think we're saying something.
Talking about policy and science, right?
Yeah, but gathering information on what other schools are doing, if they have contacts that can help us do that, I think that's helpful.
Right.
That's all I was trying to say.
So we can use their contacts, but you want to say that in minutes?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right.
Okay. With that addition, which, thank you, Amy. Would anyone like to invite a motion to accept the consent agenda? Would you like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, we do have communication. If anyone has any questions? Okay. So then I would like to happily adjourn and move to...
Any items for the October 9th meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any items that anyone would like to suggest for the October 9th meeting?
Can I just, really quickly, so, with thoughts about things, and now it's not an hour long, now we've got a full meeting potentially, so that that will impact what we can cover in that meeting. So we need to clarify if we have to shorten, shorten or we are doing it longer.
A regular.
A regular meeting. Does that make sense? Because we were going to be back.
Oh, that's right. And now we're going...
And now, right, and now we think we're not.
So we use that meeting to talk about our budget goals for the new funding?
And that has to work out?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Does that work? Okay.
And is that, would that also then be a good time to talk about the program of studies, potentially? Because that should be done in the, we decide early October.
So, I think what we talked about was having John come in to kind of give us a sense of where he thinks it's going, and give the school committee a chance to kind of express their interests based on feedback that they've received.
Great.
And then, that way, when John brings his proposed changes to the program of studies, the school committee's not kind of catching it, you know, within two days, kind of after it's done. Right, exactly. So that's how I remembered that conversation, but I don't remember the specific dates and that we, you know, that we planned to do that, which meetings we were going to do that, because I've forgotten when we do the program of studies. But it seems to me that December or November.
I think we did talk about October, if you wanted to have any input.
Right.
Yeah. That's the time we had to do it.
So that October 9th date, everyone okay with that for those two agenda items?
And on the goals, I don't know whether Cheryl could do that, or somebody goes back to the last couple of years and can identify, especially for youth committee members, what we might have talked about?
Sure.
Just to get a flavor of what that really looks like.
Awesome. And then there's the possibility, potentially, of having boosters come to that October 9th meeting, then with Representative from KBA, it's the firm that's been doing the work, to have a presentation, so that we can see some actual, some actual drawings and get some new members.
Correct. Right, they've completed their feasibility study, there's another, they're currently looking at two potential layouts, and there's going to be another meeting on the 25th of September, so that they can finalize what they would like to bring to us as their current recommendation of record.
So that makes a lot of sense.
And update us.
To have that, have that a brief one.
Yeah, it would have to be brief.
Yeah.
But so then, is it that, and I feel so guilty to ask you to, but does that mean you need to have something from policy? Or would it be helpful to have, not need, but would it be helpful to have some sense of, at least, if there are parameters, not a full thing?
So what has happened is Maggie and I have to meet and probably talk to Dana, because she's got all the information from Chris, and then do some work, and then meet with this group to sort of figure out.
Can I add one thing? There was a superintendent requesting information about, especially about advertising on fields from other superintendents, and he compiled five different policies from different systems.
And I've passed some NASC stuff.
And so I do have, I saved those. I do have five different policies that the subcommittee could really look at to see if there's anything that maybe perhaps we need to update, or, you know, we could take from one of those policies. Usually, those policies are vetted through school councils, so they've been, you know, they're usually pretty solid. We may not agree with it, but they might have some ideas. So I could, I'd be glad to bring those to a meeting if you wanted me to.
I'm in, yeah.
Of the subcommittee.
Right, and then there's some that policy...
Great.
Or just, I can just send them to you tomorrow.
That'd be great. I'd love to see them.
I'd like a time to meet.
Okay.
You want me to just send those to the whole committee, or just to you two, or you want it, Dana?
I would love to see it, yes.
Dana, Maggie, and myself.
That'd be great.
Okay. And what was the third thing that we were adding to the October 9th?
It's budget.
I had budget goals.
Program of studies.
Yes.
And also brief boosters.
Oh, I thought there was one between that. No? Just those three? Okay.
Just those three. Good. Any other thoughts for the October 9th?
Maybe just look at last year's.
Yeah.
We'll look to see.
All righty. So that being done, anything else? I think we can adjourn, go to executive session.
You have to read that out.
Okay. I am moving that we adjourn to executive session to discuss security personnel or devices and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and employee benefits, not to return to open session.
Yes.
Yes. Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.